Council meeting, order May 3, 2022. Any additions to the agenda? Land bank, we'll put that on our new business appointment.
Do you want to put in the five-minute executive session for Jeff for non-elected personnel? We already got that under?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
We got a five-minute executive session for Jeff at the end. No more additions to the agenda. Citizen comments.
I have a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor? That's five and oh. Citizen comments? Any citizen comments? Chris?
Yes. Do I present right now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I prepared this stuff for everybody. And we'll pass it out right now. First off, I appreciate everybody's time. Do you have it or do I have it?
But you can. I was just gonna help.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, I don't know if some of you know what I'm doing here. Passing out a copy of the Constitution, which is the supreme law in our land. I served in the military, Marine Corps veteran. I find nothing more important than our constitutional rights. So first off, we're off. The most important people in this room, though, as we all know, are these young people right here. They're the ones that vote. That's for you. They're the ones that vote and they're the ones that give us our voice to our elected officials. I gave you that one copy. You guys can hang on to those two. You'll leave them for class.
Okay.
Did everybody get one over there? Thank you. So, as we know, freedom of speech is a First Amendment right. Right to address our government, freedom of speech, right to assemble in public. Who did not get one? Freedom of speech, right to address our government, freedom of religion, freedom to assemble in public, and I'm forgetting one more because I'm nervous, so forgive me. I don't know if everybody has a copy here. I think you all are just glancing through what I have presented you. All right, no law prohibiting freedom of speech, religion, exercising of that. Freedom of press, that was the one I was forgetting. So, the press is obviously present, as they should always be, to record what our government officials do for us. Now, I'm gonna read a quick statement, not really a statement. It's something from one of our forefathers who signed the declaration, Henry David Thoreau. And I'm gonna actually read something also from Edward Everett Hale. And it says, "I am only one, but I am one. I cannot do everything, but I can do something, and I will not let what I cannot do interfere with what I can do." So I have a voice and I've brought it here today. What I presented you guys on this piece of paper is an ordinance to make St. John a Second Amendment sanctuary city. As you know, the Dillon Spark lot had somebody that was carjacked. Although it happened a long time ago, it still happens in these small towns. The most important people, like I said, in this room are these children. We have children that are younger than them. Jamie has kids, I have kids, Marshall Ryan, I know I've met y'all's kids, Sarah, you have kids. So I think that our most important thing we need to protect is our kids. Our property is second, okay? Some of us have businesses and property. We need to protect that as well. I'm just gonna go ahead and read from this and then I guess the city goes ahead and votes on it. I'm not sure how this works, so kind of note this.
So what would happen is you can present it and then council can look over the information. With it being an ordinance, we will have to have the attorney review it and then like at the next meeting they can...
Okay, I figured as much. Does anybody have any questions for me so far? Okay. So it's ordinance which shall be known and may be cited as the Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance prohibiting material support or resources for the enforcement of federal acts regarding firearms, firearm accessories, and ammunition, providing a severability clause provided for publication and the establishment and effective date. Whereas the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States reads as follows, "A well-regulated militia, being necessary for the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms, shall not be infringed." Our forefathers made that number two to protect our First Amendment rights. They knew that one day we would need number two to protect number one. Whereas all federal acts, laws, orders, rules, and regulations regarding firearms, firearm accessories, and ammunition are a violation of the Second Amendment. And whereas the right to be free from the commandeering hand of the federal government has been most notably recognized by the United States Supreme Court in Prince versus the United States, when the court held, "A federal government may neither issue directives requiring the state to address particular problems nor command the state's officers or those of their political subdivisions to administer or enforce a federal regulatory program." And whereas an anti-commanderian principle recognized by the United States Supreme Court in Prince versus the United States are predicated upon the advance, uh, advice of James Madison, who is another one of our forefathers. I hope you kids know that. I gave you a constitution. You're welcome. Who is, who in Federalist number 46 advised a refusal to cooperate with officers of the Union in response to either unconstitutional federal measures or constitutional but unpopular federal measures? Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of St. John, Section 1, the purpose. The City Council of St. John, this is obviously the rough draft, so. City of St. John hereby declares that as a matter of public policy pursuant and in furtherance of the principles of the federalism enshrined in the Constitution of the United States, the federal government may not commandeer officers, agents, or employees of the state or any political subdivision of the state to participate in the enforcement or implementation of any federal act or regulatory program. It is the intent of this act to protect the employees of the city, including law enforcement officers, from being directed, though federal executive orders, agency orders, statutes, laws, rules, or regulations, in effect on or after effective date of this ordinance, to violate their oath of office and individual rights affirmed under the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States and Section and Article of the, which is the Second Amendment, of the Constitution of the State of Kansas. Section 2, pro, pro, uh...
Prohibition.
Thank you. Prohibition on material support and resources on federal enforcement. No agent, employee, or official of the City of St. John or any corporation providing services to the City of St. John shall knowingly and willingly provide material support for or participate in any way in the enforcement or implementation of any federal acts, laws, orders, rules, or regulations regarding firearms, firearm accessories, and ammunition. No assets or funds of the City of St. John shall be used in whole or in part to engage in any activity that aids in federal agency, federal agent, or work, corporation providing services to the federal government or the enforcement of any investigation pursuant of the enforcement of any federal act, law, order, rule, or regulation regarding a personal firearm, firearm accessories, or ammunition. Section 3, severability. Should any article, section, part, paragraph, sentence, phrase, clause, or word of this ordinance for any reason be held illegal, inoperative, or invalid, or if any exception to the limitation upon any general provision herein contained, be held to be unconstitutional or invalid or ineffective? The reminder shall nevertheless stand effective as a valid, as in it has been enacted, ordained without a portion held to be legal, inoperative, unconstitutional, invalid, or ineffective. Section 4, repealing conflict. All ordinances and parts of the ordinance in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of the conflict with this ordinance. Section 5, publishing and effective date. This ordinance shall be published and become effective in accordance with state law. Anybody have any questions?
What brought this about? Why did you decide to bring this to council? I mean, besides the obvious, why did you decide to bring this to council?
Well, I noticed that there are some businesses here that support our constitutional rights, and there are some businesses that do not support our constitutional rights. The only example I can give you is Squeaks made a policy where nobody can carry a firearm in there. I understand they serve alcohol, but they are a restaurant. And if a criminal was to get out of jail, the first place they go to look for is easy targets, sitting targets. Old women, places with no weapons. Kids, victims, they want victims. They don't want to fight. They want an easy target.
Correct.
There are other businesses, like the Mayor Bob's, he has signs on his business that allow you to lawfully carry. Kansas became, I think, number 47? I didn't write that down, in a constitutional carry state. So what I would like St. John to do is to follow Kansas's suit and support that, you know? I want to protect our kids, and there may be a time where we need to. The most important resource we have is our kids. When we all pass away, our legacy and everything we have taught them is what they're gonna be bringing to this table. And I don't want anybody to be a victim.
Right. I absolutely agree on that. My biggest concern, though, is with some businesses, they, they have a right to say whether they're going to allow, right now, that is, right, to allow firearms into their place of business. It's a private business, they set the rules for their business. My concern is that we would get pushback from up above, you know?
I understand. I understand there's always pushback when it comes to our constitutional rights.
Absolutely, yeah.
But I mean, our forefathers knew that, and that's why they put it in here, in the Constitution.
Right.
And that's how we protect ourselves.
Absolutely.
When seconds count, remember, the police are only minutes away.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have questions? All right, thank you for hearing me out.
Council, any questions for Chris? Moving on. Consent agenda. Through the minutes in regular council meeting, April 19, 2022. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? That's five and oh. Appropriation ordinance, 5/3 of 2022, $82,406.54 in petty cash, $400 even. Is that gonna pay a motion? Got a motion and a second by Brad. All in favor? All opposed? That's five and oh. Department head committee reports. Electrical department, Jeff.
Hasn't anything changed on the, on the engine going forward at this time? I haven't heard anything from Mike. We're still working on that underground and setting some poles and changing some things. So, as the weather permits, we're glad to see the rain, so we're not gonna complain about that, but. The other thing I had, and I don't know whether, I think Jamie might have put it in your package, was we've been looking really hard at maybe trying to find a wire trailer. Everything that we have has been handmade down there, and they're not, the trailers aren't big enough to reel the wire sizes of reels that we've got now. When we pull overhead wire, we need to be able to slow those reels down as we pull them through. And I've looked at several trailers. Some of them are very expensive, some of them are reasonable, but the one that I passed out to you is about $8,000. And if we were to show you the video, it's basically non-mechanical. You can make it, you can make it with hydraulics and stuff on it, but it's made to load a reel of wire by just simply pulling the pin back in the truck, picking it up, pulling forward, sticking the pin back in it. We were looking at maybe putting a hydraulic pump on it and a wheel. I saw one from a different place on there that could be easily put on a trailer like that and run with a 12-holz electric over hydraulic pump, which we can buy for about $400, and be able to control the speed on those reels as we pull that wire. Most generally, always when we frame and we pull wire in, we pull it in above the hot stuff and leave everybody on, we don't shut anybody off when we do that. So keep the sag out of it, maybe keep control of the tension on it, but that trailer is 28 weeks out. The COVID deals really hasten things up, and so they're just not building, they're not going out as fast as they were. I've talked with Bruce and the guys down at Safeway, and they're pretty sure they can build us a trailer like that for probably less than $7,000, and maybe less than that. We just need to put the material together metal-wise to see what the metal was costing because it'd light gasoline and everything else is going up about as fast as anything else, but. The ones that we've got are just, they're pretty rough. You can ask Mark, he's seen them. I mean, we do what we have to do, but we have no way to control. Every time we use a big reel, we have to go to Kevin's and take his roller in order to pull a big reel, so. That one will take an eight-foot reel of conduit or wire, whatever, it'll take up to about 6,000 pounds, I think, is what it'll take weight on us. So, it was just something that I thought I'd bring in, and if you were interested, why? That'd be wonderful, and if you aren't, I understand.
Jeff, has Bruce given you any numbers as to what the total cost might be?
He just thinks by what they've been doing that they can keep it under 7,000.
Did he give you any estimated time of completion?
He thought they could do it in a couple of weeks if they did it in the evenings and that stuff, when it didn't interfere with the shop stuff, so.
And which trailer, Jeff, was he?
It's the one that has got the panel hitch on it that backs up. Yeah, if you could see the video on it, you just chalk the wheels. You just chalk the wheels and pull the pin on the tongue and just back it up. That's the same trailer, that one that's gonna be a reel on. There's a pin.
This one?
It's the same thing.
Not this one? This is all the same trailer?
No. This, I put this on here for that rubber tire. That's how you control the speed of it.
But this is what it would look like?
It just has a pin right here that you pull it and back up, and it just lays a reel right there. It's notched in here where it'll pick up different heights of reels depending on what size of reel you got. It's 66 inches wide, and it's about 54 inches tall here, so you can pick up an eight-foot reel on it, so. That motor, that motor's the way that this trailer's designed, with a rubber tire on the other side to slow it down and speed it up, but I like this way a little better. You control it with just a jack. I mean, just, you can put a hand jack on it and control it, but it has a hydraulic motor here that you can set the speed up, plug it in the back of our digger truck, if nothing else. That's the way we do our rope puller, so. I mean, there's several ways we can do it, or we can put a pump on it, we can slow it down now, we do, so. Anyway, them little, them little packs are about $4,000. I thought we could do something way cheaper than that.
Yeah, we just have a stand to put on a trailer, a forklift, or a piece of digger truck, and set it on the stand, and then we'll just chain it down, hook the wire to a pole, and then reel it out, you know, drive it out in the field, reel it off. It's just, we roll wire up, we say, like Jeff's talking about, yes, but that would
And I think if we wanted to make it a little fancier as we go, we can do it a piece at a time, you know? In the wintertime if we wanted to. Some of these trailers have two racks on them where you can load another reel on the front. This one, in our case, doesn't have to because we pull one reel at a time anyway. But what got me to thinking about this was that when I bought that four-on-underground for this stuff over here, I saved 60 cents a foot by buying it on one cut instead of three cuts. So now that reel's 40 inches wide, I don't have anything wide enough to unreel it. So I think we're gonna get Golden Mills trailer, we're gonna try and cut three reels of it so that we can get them separated and we can pull them through all at the same time. But we just don't, you know, some of these, this bigger wire is coming on bigger reels now, and we just don't have any way to handle it at all. But one guy can do that by himself. He can back up to it and stick the pipe in it and hook it and pick it up. I mean, it has a lot of advantages. We can lay conduit with it if we lay water pipe, you know, if we lay a roll water pipe, we can lay a roll water pipe with it. There's several things it could be used for, so, anyway.
So Sunfire's gonna put the reel on for you and the hydraulic pump, you can...
Yeah, yeah. He told me that he'd do just as much as we wanted him to do, but, and it's a pretty simple trailer. I mean, it's not, it's built just like a, just like a bail mover. I mean, basically is what it is, except it has uprights where the hooks are to pick the pipe up, you know? But other than that, it's about like a bail mover, so. But with that way, we can keep the business in town and we can get it built the way we want to, but, yeah.
A lot sooner than 28 weeks.
A lot sooner than 28 weeks. I'd found one in Virginia that's, that's, was right up our alley for cost and everything else, but I can't get them to return my calls. And afraid on it, probably to get it out here, it'd be 700, 800, 900 bucks, I suppose, you know? At least, at least. It was before fuel went over five bucks, so, anyway.
Jeff, just ballpark figure, what was the cost of the manufactured, uh...
For that trailer?
Yeah.
It was about $8,000, I think's what that one was.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think, I think labor-wise, the labor's probably not gonna be a whole lot different than what it would be there, but the cost of getting it before next Christmas is, you know, is the least we could use it, because once we get done with the center ground wire, we're going back to overhead stuff, so.
I'd like to see some numbers from Bruce.
I'll get you what I can. I just, you know, I don't know how close he's gonna be able to get on metal, because he said it climbs every week. It's just like early handles, but, but he assured me that they were pretty sure they could keep it under 7,000. That's all I've got.
I don't see a problem with that. I think he'd get it built, but it worked. He just went out, said it costs 100,000, probably.
I'm pretty sure that he did that for less than half, but you never know, you know?
Bruce tells you it's not gonna be above that. It's...
Yeah.
So.
Take a motion?
Yeah. I think it's nice to allow Jeff, Jeff Sunfire, he was able to build a wire dealer trailer. I'd see...
Eight thousand?
Eight thousand?
No, exactly, eight thousand. Got a motion on the table? Sarah seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's five and oh.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
$8,000, Jeff?
Okay.
Trying to find my agenda, whatever happened to you. Ja, uh, Jason? What do you got?
Well, I did print that letter out for you guys on that Len Cobber. Good enough for that. I'll read over that. Uh, the next one is on the sewer side of it. I did send you, I did correct you the letter that part of it come from, the few of them come from the state on our report, and the main one, we, we're working on the main, the part of it, but I did get a bid for that AMS to come out here. You guys looked that over. This is, this is the company I was talking about. They did come out and measure ponds, and to give you a quick rundown on that, the pond, number one pond's at 34 inches, number two is at 32, and the other one's at 24, number three, the farthest one. So looking at that one paper from AMS on the back of that, you can tell where they came in and measured those each one, so when you do the math on those, those are in inches, so we're not having too much leeway, we're short-circuiting quite a bit out there, and we're not getting that. Ponds are not doing their job because of the, the sludge is so high. So what this company does is, it's pretty much, what they do is they just take a big, they got three trailers that dispose of like Red X, and it just starts eating that sludge and just keeps eating it till they get the depth they want. And that's what they came in here with the bid, and that's what I wanted you guys to look over.
I'm gonna ask that this table that I got of Charlie K. Dif, or KWURA, is that right? And they come out and measure the ponds because they have no stick in the game, so, like he'll, and I think he tried to come out, but he couldn't do it.
Yeah, there we go.
So he said that he's gonna try to get out by the end of the month. And then I've also been researching other companies, so it's not just this one, but sludge removal is an expensive process. He said about $40,000 an acre, and we have 15 acres of lagoons, so, I mean, it's something to be noted. I don't know why we don't have a reserve, like, I know we have sewer replacement, but I don't know if anyone ever thought about lagoon maintenance in the past, so, I mean, I think it's definitely something we need to think about when we're doing the budget process as well. I know Ellis, she emailed me back and said that they used a company out of Victoria, and I think I actually know them, so I was gonna reach out and try to get more information on, on what they do and, and, but I'd like, I'd like to see Charlie come out and get us those numbers, just, because he said, you know, like, we're a member of them, so they'll come out and give us all the technical stuff, you know? They're not bidding for anything, like, they're strictly here to walk us through the process, so. He said he'll try to get here by the end of the month and we can get a couple other prices, but we'll definitely need to start looking at things for the budget and putting back money as they come. PDHG recommends sludge removal when there's 16 inches of sludge, so if these numbers are right, they all three actually need removed, so. I don't know why they would have let the 24 go. I don't know why they wouldn't have wanted to get into the 24, into...
Well, they were gonna, they're, they said not three trailers, but the third one's so low, they said they were, they're just plugging that in just to get it, uh, they're not gonna charge us for a third one.
Yeah, we, 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 we did have someone come up and make that, but we're not giving the...
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I looked at everything, and it, I mean, sludge removal is, it's a, they're not lying in their, in their letter, it's an expensive thing, so, um, I just kind of took that in line with it and tried to talk to a couple other cities and, I mean, there's other cities that have looked into it and they're like, we can go big, new lagoons for cheaper, so...
If you got the property, you can...
Yeah.
If you gotta buy property, it's probably not feasible.
I'll grab you.
I guess we probably also need to figure out where we're gonna pull money from to fund it, especially if we don't have anything set up for it.
Correct. So, put that on your readers. I'm gonna put it under old business and just keep getting more information on.
Are we in any trouble with the state on it?
I just, I'll just slap up the letter saying we're working on it. Uh, the next one on the streets, you guys got the bids there. I did, on the first page, or in the ones with the tons of materials asphalt, I did break those down. For the county, come in, it's $80 a ton, and I just broke those down to see how much you guys wanted to do. And on the chip seal project, I put all those numbers together with the highest of 500 and the full amount of chat, et cetera. And then on this page right here, I color-coded it just so you got, if you wanted to pick out one this year and then try to do this, or try to get it all and see what we can do of getting it all done. So I, that's what I did. I didn't do the math on each one of these, I didn't have time, but I tried to get as close as I can. I just, I just threw the highest ones out there on that middle page of the, of this There's a set, set paint or plan that we wanna try to stick with. I can figure the numbers up and stick with that, and then just come back here to the streets and figure out which ones we could do that way.
Oh, cha-ching, yeah?
Yeah.
We have seventy-five thousand in Capital Project. And looking at our fund for Capital Project Street. And then a little over a hundred and sixty thousand on Special Highway.
How much goes into that Special Highway? I know it's kind of a fluctuation.
So if we've done all these on this list, Jason, it's only low over three hundred and fifty times three.
On the, on the asphalt?
Right. Is that what this sheet figures? The asphalt?
It's, I'm just figuring the...
Or you figure in the chat?
The chat. That's all that's for. It's hard to figure out, it's hard to figure out how much.
Asphalt.
Because last year, last year, we u, we got five hundred ton, that's all we had left. And that was just from peeling off the top of it. And that was all of Broadway. Is that, that's what we were billed for, just five hundred tons. Because it, it could be, that's what I'm saying. It could be whatever, whatever you, whatever you decide on this ton, this right here, we'll sit there and just keep going till we run out of it. And then that's where we're gonna stop. So that's, that's the way prices are anymore. I mean, wow, you know? That's why I broke this down more.
Do you remember what we paid last year?
I don't. She told me, but I, I didn't write completely down though. Pam, Pam told me, and I just can't remember what she said.
Chat was...
Between twenty and thirty thousand dollars.
The chat, like twenty-eight fifty or twenty-nine fifty was his bid, in Wichita, the chat.
That was before prices went up, when we looked at it.
We had the contract before the price went up.
Yeah. Yeah, we got it here early enough last year, before they, before they shot that up.
It was like twenty-eight fifty. I think you're right, somewhere in there.
That's, that's sticking in my head.
I think you're right.
And then it won, it went to forty-seven something.
Thirty-six eighty-five a ton out of Wichita.
Because I know we're gonna, we're gonna try to get the square done this year, and then whatever we, whatever we sit there and mill up and lay over.
Can you do all this on this list this year?
We could do over, we could get four street and probably some of the other done yet. But I'm not gonna say we're getting it all. Because with that lead copper list, I still like to try to work on that every now and then and get that stuff caught up.
But none of these streets...
Oh, yeah. Some of them do, but like, like this one here, we got four over here we gotta dig up. But I've been noticing when we have metal lines, it only goes about this far back, and it turns to copper. So I'm hoping that's what these are, but I need to get them, well, we need to get them dug up as soon as we first figure it out and try to go. But on the other ones, the other ones like Santa Fe, there's a couple there. And I do believe they are copper, because I remember we had to dig one of them up, and the other one, I don't know yet. Because I was basing that on how you, how you guys wanted to go about this, and how much you wanted to spend. And then we could figure, then I could figure out which ones are, what we need to work on the most. That's why I split those up, because I just didn't think you wanna bite off that much this year.
The only thing I can say is if we can buy the asphalt and the chat, and if we don't get through all of it, I'm sure it's not gonna be any cheaper next year.
No. That's what we were talking about. You know, that stuff has a shelf life for the chat, definitely. Then you, like this stuff down here, we're gonna use it up first thing.
Right.
That'll be the first thing, because it'll, it'll still be good.
The only thing might be the oil. I mean, but I don't know how that works with, with Phil and them, if they just do what, I mean, do we have to commit twelve thousand gallons of oil with the polymer?
Pretty much a tanker load, yes. I'm pretty sure that's what you, we'd have to go a tanker load. And I tell you what it does, I mean, with, with what we have, we did, we did all of Broadway, and we have a little bit left to go put on a street. That was it. That's all we had left. So that's why I'm sitting there. If you wanted to do fourth, and break down and do Kendall and Santa Fe, then we could.
Is that what you can haul on a semi a twelve thousand gallon?
That's what Phil said, yeah.
So total with everything?
He sat there and said, I have, that's what he made out is twelve thousand gallons. And so it's not a tanker like you do. So, I've left it, I've left it at, I left it at twelve, is what it seems like. Yeah, I stand corrected, it's probably two.
It's probably two tankers.
Because we've been working so good with this, with this formula right here, I ain't gonna mess anything up with the oil part of it. But I will, I mean, if it comes down to it, we'll just have to figure out how much oil's been on the street.
How far is Monroe? I mean, is, like, is that forty thousand?
I have that map, I don't, I don't have it with me, no, not at the moment.
Shoot all of it.
What's that?
Monroe.
Yeah.
All from south end of the library.
Seventy-five, excuse me? Seventy-five thousand in the...
Capital Project Street.
What we put in there every year? Some of these are tarred in because...
That's just the budget.
You're doing water line on some of these.
Yeah, I, I just look at which ones are pretty bad. And Monroe, the edges are just getting terrible. And then I know we can't, I know, I hold, I held off on, on Main because of the curb.
That's right.
It's so bad, I hate to, I hate to do it.
Yeah, because we can take out the seventy-five and then take out the rest of the special highway.
Well, it's pretty hard to get all of it on Main Rock and Chat. Main Street's the worst curb.
We should try to do, I think, the same amount.
And seeing, I think, we bought five hundred ton last year.
That's what Pam said, was that Phil...
I think we bought five hundred ton almost.
I mean, that's multiple. We budgeted it. That's why we're here.
Yeah.
I don't wanna give anybody any wrong information here, but twelve thousand gallon on a semi loan, I question you can do that. That's two hundred and forty-three.
Well, that's what we were talking about, it's two.
It's two.
It was two, I stand corrected, sorry.
It's two.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll buy that.
Yeah, sorry.
That's, that's two, twelve thousand gallons?
Yeah, it's gotta be a six thousand gallons.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, I'll buy that.
But that, that's what, that's what we started out, when I first started going on this, and I just left the low, so I'm, I'm staying.
So do we just move it to...
So, five hundred tons.
I'm just, I'm just going off of this sheet here, because he's got it broken down. Basically, the chat, the oil, the civil event, the county, five hundred tons is ninety-one thousand, and then hauling for the, the chat. This is a total ninety-eight thousand, nine oh two oh five. And we put seventy-five back in that general every year, so we might as well use it and pull the rest out of Special Highway and just do the whole thing.
I guess I'd make a mention for Jason to purchase five hundred tons of asphalt, left box hauling holidays, all the chat, twelve thousand gallons of polymer oil. The total of ninety-eight thousand nine hundred two dollars and five cents.
Got a motion on the table. Sarah, did you second that? And a second. Any more discussion on the rock and the oil and the asphalt? All in favor? All opposed? Passes five and oh.
Other than that, we got a pool cleanup pool, and put the poles up for the, for cars. And we cut some holes in the concrete, three of them for umbrella sand that we got been mortared in. So, other than that, it's just ready to be cleaned and used. That's all I have.
Any questions for Jason before we move on?
Thanks for getting that done, Jason. I'm sure Stephanie appreciates that.
Uh, nothing on the street part?
No, that was included.
Okay, you got that? Police chief, cool toy. Yeah, nothing. Fire chief, Michael, he ain't here. City administrator, Jamie.
Uh, like I said in my report, I started working on budget worksheets, so we'll start that process. Um, I should have the worksheets out to the guys before the end of the month, so we'll get that going and then get you guys thinking about it. Budget timer already.
Anything else? Any questions for Jamie? We need, we would entertain a motion, a letter to Jamie?
No.
Answer this down here, land bank here. Okay. City attorney, John, you got anything?
Of course. We had a municipal court case appealed to District Court, so if you're up there and you see a city, St. John's case, that's what that is.
I didn't like your guys' ruling, did I take it?
I didn't like losing the majority out, I guess.
Any questions for John, other than what he said? Okay, old business, property, six forty-seven East Fifth?
No updates on any of them. Preston's looking at trying to get eight oh eight north Broadway down. We were gonna work this week, but I think rain's gonna deter us, so hopefully we can get on top of that next week, and we'll have another one off the list.
Do we need to start this process over again?
Yes, because I have one that needs to go on there.
I think we have a few that need some attention done to them.
Yeah. Because I, yeah, I have pictures coming from my report that was filed.
Because I mean, we've pretty much given these people all the time in the world, and they know that they're coming down.
Right.
So I think it's a good time to start over again, and to get back on them and get some more added to that list. So...
We got to be pretty efficient when we did them all at once, like that.
Yeah.
But I've, I've had quite a few people contacting me about some bad houses in town that they'd like to see. And so I think we need to try to work on that again, get a good list together, and do it all over again at one time.
Any other questions about the dead houses? Moving on. Truck parking, engine and power plant, I think Jeff covered that. Swimming pool, I think he covered that. Sewer cleaning and camera, we need to talk about that. Mask communication system?
Did you wanna take that off, Jamie?
We'll take the mask communication system off. Anything on the vacuum truck that we're working on repairs? I think I read something about getting a bid or something. Oh, no more questions? We'll move to do...
Do you wanna take swimming pool off there, or is there something else that we're...
No, I still, we still have things that we need for that.
Okay.
I couldn't remember. There's a couple of things.
Yeah, I've been trying to look, um, yeah, some of the stuff that Stephanie has on our list is like the A D, like handicap accessible chair. So I've been trying to keep my eye on it cheaper, and those are expensive. So, I just wanna keep that on there till the list is done.
Jamie, real quick, the mask communication system, we found it through your board.
I just don't wanna talk about it each week, or report nothing each week, so I don't, I don't know the best solution. So I'm gonna just keep digging and...
Thank you.
Figure something out. Or I'll just start going over there.
Begin the discussion. New business, land bank appointments?
So, we, we discovered today that we need to set up the land bank a little bit different with the change of council and mayor. Mark and Marshall and Kyle and Bobby are all on a land bank, and we cannot have a meeting that way. So, I think, I heard Mark said that he...
He volunteered, didn't he?
Is gonna volunteer to come off. And Joe has volunteered to come, or...
To continue.
Continue his term. And you had someone that was willing to come on, so...
Who's the first to respond?
Tony.
It's mayor with the consent of council, just like everything else for appointments. So, are you, can you try to...
Yeah, I can. The only terms, the only terms that were set were the three terms, though. Or the three.
There's one, point of no position two, was a certain, or point position one was a certain one-year term.
And that was Joe.
Okay. So he is then...
See, everybody was on a two-year term except for Joe, and Joe's term would have been up in January.
And everyone else's term's gonna be up...
Next year.
So then...
So who are the council members right now?
Kyle and Marshall.
Okay.
And Bobby.
So this would be, you're appointing somebody for a two-year term? Wait, which, what was Mark?
Mark was a two-year term. So we would appoint him for a two-year term, and Joe Cornwell for a one-year term.
Okay. So then, the mayor just has to make that recommendation, and you guys have to vote on it. I recommend that, that you appoint Joe Cornwell to take Mark Bryant's place, which is...
No, just for a one-year term.
For a one-year term.
And Kevin Davis for...
Kevin Davis for a two-year term.
Second.
I didn't hear any motion on the table? Got a motion on the table, Kevin, or Rod?
Do you second it then?
Nobody seconded it.
Second.
Second by Marshall. All in favor? All opposed? Passes five and oh. New appointments to the land bank will be Joe Cornwell, Kevin Davis. Anything else on the land bank appointments? Executive session, five minutes, Jeff Williamson.
Make a motion for a five-minute executive session, non-elected personnel. Everybody around the table, and Jeff Williamson.
Second. And Jason.
Oh, and Jason?
And Jason.
And Jason.
Got a motion on the table and a second? All in favor? All opposed? Passes five and oh.
Two zero seven fifty-five.
Seven fifty-five.
See, graduate with extra credit.
Weston.
I think everyone had an agenda. Agenda, an agenda, an agenda for me.
Jamie, I guess, if council's okay with it, I'd say that we burnt the gap on the six rule we've heard him when he's gone.
The council, can some, okay? All the council? What do you got up here? Is there anything, anything else anybody wants to talk about or any questions for anybody that's here or anything about it? If not, I'd entertain something else.
I'd make a motion adjourned.
Got a motion on the table, adjourned. Second? Mark seconded, all favor? All opposed?